Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance, and if you would, please give those to our city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and our speakers will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. This time I will call to order and convene the regular meeting of the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019. Our invocation tonight and our pledge of allegiance will be offered and led by members of Scout Troop 40. If you would please rise.
Keep everybody safe and have a nice meeting to where we can discuss any flaws or good things within the city. We thank thee, oh Lord, for making everybody safe. Amen.
Amen. They did that at the last minute at my request. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Mcnevo.
Present.
Councilmember Robles is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have a special presentation tonight. It is a proclamation for the 25th anniversary of the California Desert Protection Act. So I will read the proclamation, and I believe Mr. Moises Sisneros is here tonight, so I'll read the proclamation. We'll have a photo op, and then I'll have you say a few words about this, all right? "Commemorating the 25th anniversary of the California Desert Protection Act, whereas October 31st, 2019 marks 25 years since the beginning, or since the signing of the 1994 California Desert Protection Act, CDPA, which recognized the world-class uniqueness of the California deserts and provided destination points by creating the Mojave National Preserve, Joshua Tree National Park, and Death Valley National Park, as well as 69 new desert wilderness areas in the California desert region. And whereas over the last 25 years, the protected lands and wildlife values of the California desert have created a benefit to desert travel, including visitor spending, industry earnings, and government revenue. And whereas the protected lands of the California desert are the historic home and contain the sacred sites, cultural artifacts, and cultural landscapes of the Chemavie, Mojave, Surrano, Cohuia, and Paiute, and other tribes that have lived in the desert region for millennia. And whereas the protected lands of the California desert provide a place for members of the desert community and visitors alike to view wildlife, hike, bike, and engage in off-road motorized recreation. And whereas the protected lands of the California desert provides a place for residents who enjoy the rural character of deserts, mountains, and wild lands to experience solitude and disturbed vistas and glorious sunsets, and to gaze up in the night sky without light or noise pollution. And whereas the protected lands and conservation measures of the California desert safeguard precious groundwater, aquifer, watersheds, desert plants and wildlife, and air quality critical to our region and economy. And whereas the protected lands and conservation measures of the California desert are the product of community input and stakeholder engagement. And whereas it remains in the City of Grand Terrace's interest to maintain the protected lands of the California desert as a recreational resource, as part of the larger ecosystem, and as wild lands, and now therefore be it resolved, the City of Grand Terrace honors and recommits itself to the safeguards within the past 25 years of desert protection and the scenic vistas, cultural landscapes, wildlife habitat, dark night skies, water resources, military security, and economic benefits provided by the protection of lands in the California desert presented this 22nd day of October 2019. It is signed by myself and my colleagues up here with me and Councilmember Robles, who could not be here tonight. If you would, please join us over here for a photo.
On behalf of the Sierra Club and the Sierra Club members that reside here in the great city of Grand Terrace, we are heartfelt when hearing these words from our mayor describing what an important piece of landscape we have in our own backyard. The economy, the impact on the economy of the desert is in the billions. Seven billions, seven billion is used to generate a great standard of living for those of us in the surrounding area that use this desert not only as a sacred place but also as a part of our outdoor economy. I grew up in the concrete jungle, didn't visit the desert for years, not until I was in my early 30s. I took my nephew with me, he was around 10. He grew up with asthma. When we were out in the desert, we're out there for a week, didn't even notice. I mean, we were jumping boulders and it just, it wasn't an issue. He was breathing perfectly fine, and it was just a magical moment, under the canopy of the Milky Way, looked over at him, and we just talked about his dreams, and it was beautiful to be in that awesome environment. So we just thank you and all those citizens here that are protecting it and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this project. Our next item is reordering or additions to, or removal of items from the agenda, and Madam City Clerk, we have items for removal?
Staff is going to poll Councilmember Robles's future agenda item requests due to her absence from this meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items from the consent calendar? All right, seeing that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent.
Mayor Allen, move that we, what did we do with this thing? We approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Council, uh, Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Mcnevo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on an item that is not on the agenda. They may briefly respond to statements or ask a question for clarification, and they may ask for a brief response from staff or that an item be agendized for a future meeting. Do we have requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We're saving it up for the items on the agenda. So we'll move on to council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to do is, I didn't know if I could, if I should pull this item from the consent calendar. I didn't. I should have asked first, but I just wanted, item six on the consent calendar was the letter of resignation from Ms. Suarez, Parks and Recreation Committee, who moved away, and I just wanted to publicly state thank you to Ms. Suarez for her dedication on the Parks and Rec Committee, and to all the folks from the community who dedicate themselves to the various, you know, committees and councils and boards and different things that helps our town move forward. We thank her for her time and wish her well. I do. And so with that said, on October 9, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Task Board Semi-Annual Meeting. What I took away from that, I need to, or I'd like to bring it to your attention, that next year landfill organic waste must be, have a 50% reduction. That means all the food waste that goes to California's landfills. By 2020, there must be a 50% reduction, and in 2022, the regulations take effect, and cities and counties have to start reporting this immediately. Local governments will be responsible for almost all aspects of this effort by the state to reduce our landfill waste by providing organic collection services to all residents and businesses, conducting education outreach in the community, secure access to recycling capacities, establishing edible food recovery programs. This is, this is what's happening by next year, is edible food recovery programs. And I think that's really a great thing, because a lot of our air quality is affected by the methane produced by the organic waste in our landfills. So our cities, we are going to be, have big responsibilities on us. We learned from a private recycler who is trying to establish a pulping plant and a mixed plastics-to-fuel plant, we heard from him, and also that we've just, they talked about how over on California Street in Redlands, folks might want to try to avoid that, they're doing a lot of construction and grinding that straight up, and East Valley Recycling and Transfer has submitted a revision to the local enforcement agency to increase tonnage from 900 tons per day to 1,500 tons per day. On October 11, at the OmniTrans Route Revision Update Meeting I attended, and I learned about that, and the only thing I want to say about that is, I'll defer anything to you, Mayor, because you're on the board of directors, but I just want to say that I and we are pushing strongly to get more bus stops, especially to go from here to the VA hospital, either from Riverside, from RTA, or from OmniTrans. We're really working on that, and so we want you to know that. I attended, on October 17 and 18, I went to the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo, and I learned about new technology there that's being used to optimize city outcomes and transportation and modern policing technology in California. Resiliency and tragedies, and that's affecting a lot of communities today. It happened in Santa Rosa this morning. I just want to, our thoughts go out to them. We learned about managing, let's see, resiliency, preserving community identity, and cannabis for all, and managing housing. No, wait, it's managing housing and cannabis for all, or, it's one of those. It was housing for all and managing cannabis use. That's what it was. Two different, two different training sessions. I was confused, but I learned about that too, and it was a great event, and I'm glad I went, learned a lot. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say, Mr. Allen, I didn't know that cannabis for all was part of the class.
Must have been.
I know it was long sessions, but yeah, it was really, okay, really unique, the League of Cities and what they had. I just got one personal thing here, is from the PTA for Grand Terrace Elementary, or Terrace View Elementary School. Tomorrow's Unity Day, it's from 7:00 AM, or 7:10 AM to 8:30 AM. What this is, is a request from the PTA was, I'll read it. "Please join us as we take the morning to greet our students as they arrive to school. Unity Day is the signature event, National Bully Prevention Month, has been recognized in the United States since 2011. To participate in Unity Day, individuals, schools, communities, and business wear are display orange to show support for students who have been bullied. The message from us is to kindness matters. Let's spread kindness on this morning at Terrace View Elementary School and show the students we care about the safe and kind community. Please arrive at 7:10 AM and come in the front of the school. You're welcome to make your own personal posters with the messages that are positive and uplifting, for example, 'We are glad to see you, kindness matters, and it starts with you, I'm glad you're here, you are loved, stand up for what's right, smile, life is good, walk tall, and spread kindness.' You can wear orange or add orange to your uniform or attire. You're welcome to bring orange props to greet students, the more orange the better. It's a simple message, and it's nothing more powerful than having all of you help send this message to our students." So thank you for choosing to participate in Unity Day. So it's open to anybody who would like to come out there to Terrace View Elementary and welcome the students as they come in the morning. Wear orange if you have it, but just, you know, be a kind smile out there and welcome them, and it's a help to stop bullying in the schools. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also mention that I, too, was invited, and I was the voting delegate for the League of Cities this weekend. It was actually the 16th, 17th, and 18th, and I remember now why I hate the 91 freeway, because that's how I got back, and it took me about three hours to get home. But other than that, when I was there, there was a lot of educational opportunities, as well as league business, and one of the items that we voted for was, had to do with what they call Rule 20, which is a utility fee, and it is, has been stretched, at least according to the vote, we're in the process of lobbying for it, to include wildfire items, because as we know, there's a real problem with it, and as we saw here recently up in San Bernardino, it can happen to anybody. I really also enjoyed a lot the information about a grant that is out there, and I've had some conversation with staff a little bit about it. But regardless of the grant, the important thing is, is that in order for us to be able to consider providing for the future generations in additional housing opportunities, as you know, we're a very non-dense area, and we like it like that, that's fine. But there are also opportunities, when you've got, like I have, I've got a big old half-acre, which most of it's useless, but I have a half acre behind me, and instead I chose to build, I chose to take down my third car garage and put in place and add to it a father-in-law suite. And that served my father-in-law for the eight years he was with us until he was 90 years old. And it worked out real well, because it was an easy transition for him to sell his single-family home in West Covina and then be there near us with privacy. There was no door directly between my house and there, and his little space, and it was equipped with a bedroom, a bathroom, and a full bath, a full kitchen, and a little nook area, and of course its own front door, and a little living area. In that, it was less than, or actually it was measured exactly 350 square feet, which is less than a two-car garage. And he was a big fellow, so it worked out really well for him. He could get around and do what he needed to do. So I would suggest that if you're contemplating that kind of circumstance, last year, the state passed some laws that made it desirable, and not only desirable, but also affordable, just remember that you need to hook your addition onto the existing unit in order to be able to avoid impact fees and so on. So I would suggest that you contact the city if it's something that you find would work out for your plans, and see what you can put together in order to be able to create that second unit, accessory unit. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On October 10, I attended the Metro Valley Study Session for the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, and there were a few items of business to report on that. One of them was the preview of hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for property interests for the Mount Vernon Viaduct Project in the city of San Bernardino. And so that's a bridge that spans a number of railroad tracks. It's been in existence for decades, and it really needs to be replaced. And so unfortunately, that means that there's property that needs to be considered. So while they're negotiating that, they are actually looking at starting the process for condemnation at this time, in the event that perhaps they don't reach negotiations with the owners of those properties. We also recommended for approval to the board, a cooperative agreement with the, with Caltrans for plan specifications and estimates, right-of-way phases for Interstate 15, Corridor Contract One, defining roles, responsibilities, and funding for these phases, and this is an expansion of Interstate 15 to include HOV and perhaps express lanes. And then we also recommended approval to the board for a second amendment to a contract with the City of Montclair for their construction of the Mona Vista Avenue Grade Separation Project. On October 9th and 10th, I attended the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Risk Management Conference. They had some very interesting topics. One of them had to do with public liability after a fire and how to prepare for, how to prepare your community for the things that come after a fire perhaps comes through. We also had a nice, a nice briefing by a couple of cities that had to respond to major disasters in their communities, mostly due to wildfires. And their emphasis was on telling cities about how to set up your emergency operations centers and making sure that staff know what their role is in the event of any kind of a disaster, and probably most importantly, making sure council knows what its role is during these times as well. There was a session that I attended on cyber and ransomware exposure, and that's something that we really need to keep in mind, because it can become very expensive and make it very difficult for the city to operate. There was also a discussion about approaches for staff who may encounter homeless, and a nice way to approach those in the community that are homeless and help them to get the help they need while staying safe. As Councilmember Allen briefly mentioned, there was a meeting with OmniTrans staff. OmniTrans is in the, in the process of identifying 11% cuts throughout their service area, and so they came and they briefed us on what they are proposing for cuts in Grand Terrace. We're not served by too many routes on OmniTrans bus line, but what we discussed with them is that Riverside Transit Authority has a bus that comes from Riverside, drives all the way through our city out to Loma Linda, and doesn't stop. They used to stop, and they used to stop and pick up passengers that wanted to head out to the Veterans Hospital, or bring those at the Veterans Hospital back this way. And a number of years ago, they changed their route, and they come through what they call closed door. So we had a discussion with OmniTrans staff about perhaps approaching Riverside Transit Authority to reconsider, and maybe some memorandums of understanding that could be between the two agencies that might entice them to do that. So while they might cut a portion of our service, perhaps we might persuade RTA to start serving us how they used to serve us. We'll see how that goes. On October 14th through the 16th, I had the opportunity to travel with about 36 other community leaders to visit the State Water Project in Northern California. They call it a Delta, Bay Delta Inspection Trip. It started with a quick tour of Oroville Dam. We looked at a lot of the restructuring they've done since the spillway problems that they had in 2017. So the Oroville Dam, it's on the Feather River above the city of Oroville in Butte County, and it creates Lake Oroville, which does a number of things. One of them is it generates electricity, and it provides drinking and irrigation for the Central Valley, and it's very important for us in Southern California. When it was constructed, it cut off several miles of spawning and nursery grounds for salmon and steelhead trout, and so the salmon and steelhead trout generally return to their home at the end of their season to lay eggs. And so that, when they built this Oroville Dam, it cut off that passage for these fish. So co-located next to the Oroville Dam is a fish hatchery that allows the fish to spawn and lay their eggs and give birth to many other fish that then populate that area. The tour also included a proposed off-stream reservoir that's located northwest of Sacramento that would provide about 470,000 to 640,000 acre-feet of water storage. This would improve water supply reliability and flexibility in the system for Southern California. Its investors are the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, and the Metropolitan Water District, and other water districts. We also had a tour through the Delta Cross Channel and other areas in the Delta Region. We were shown the issues that they are having that create the vulnerabilities in that inherent system that put in jeopardy the water that we receive from the State Water Project, and we learned of some of the research that they're doing. And lastly, we looked at the Banks Pumping Plant. This is located at the South Delta. It's called the Harvey O. Banks Pumping Plant, and it is the beginning of the California Aqueduct. There are 11 pumps that lift water from the Clifton Court Four Bay, lifts it 244 feet into the 444-mile aqueduct, and the water begins its journey from there, and it ends here in Southern California. So the water from this system provides irrigation not only to the San Joaquin Valley, but also to urban Southern California. It was an amazing tour, and it really shows the investments that have been made over the course of time in providing water for our region, but also the things that jeopardize the future of the ability for us to get water from the State Water Project, and to know that our San Bernardino Valley Water District is being forward-looking in its investments and its discussions about ways to improve the Delta. And that will conclude my report. So we'll move into the rest of our agenda, on public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, however, we have unfinished business. Item seven on the agenda, it's a proposed ordinance to amend Title 17 subdivisions and Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish new minimum public hearing notification requirements on certain development-related projects. As this is the second reading of the ordinance, the first reading was brought to council at the last meeting on October 8. Staff has no changes to their presentation this time, correct? All right, so if there are no questions of staff, then there are no requests to speak on this item.
That is correct, Mayor.
All right, I will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and amending Title 17 subdivisions and Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish minimum public hearing notification." of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish minimum public hearing notification requirements on certain development-related projects.
Right. And so we need a motion for this?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protim Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is item eight on the agenda. It's consideration of three concept plans for development of 22317, 22293, and 22273 Barton Road pursuant to the executed agreement for purchase and sale of real property and joint escrow instructions between the City of Grand Terrace and the Greens Group. And our city attorney has a brief statement he would like to make prior to Director Molina's presentation.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before the director provides her presentation, I wanted to address three issues for the City Council. First is what is before the City Council tonight? Second, what is not before the City Council tonight? And then third, what are the next steps in the process? So first, what is before the City Council? And this is really for the public. Generally, when a seller of property sells their property, they wash their hands clean of it and they're done. They move on. In this case, in the best interest of the city, the City Council, when it sold the three properties, retained the right to approve the uses and the, and the, the types of uses and the combination of uses that could be developed on the property. To accomplish that approval process, the developer, in accordance with the purchase and sale agreement, is required to prepare and present concept plans of the proposed uses and the various combinations and the site plans as a concept to the City Council. And the City Council has the authority to approve that. That is solely what is before the City Council tonight, is the broad uses that are being presented for development on the property. But what is not before the City Council? What is not before the City Council is what I consider the general planning and zoning concepts that would normally be seen in front of the Planning Commission. So for example, the number of buildings, the sizes of buildings in terms of square footages, the heights of buildings, physical design of the buildings, landscaping, parking, circulation, all those details of an actual project are not before you tonight. And why? Because we haven't even determined what the uses on-site will be. And so that has to first occur. Once that occurs, and that's the next step in my presentation is, the next step is, once the developer knows exactly what uses are acceptable to the council and a general conceptual site plan, the developer will put pen to paper, putting an actual project proposal for consideration by the city. They'll submit an application to the Planning Department. And once approved, once the, the application is deemed complete, staff will go through the process like it normally does for any other project, which is to review the project in comparison to our zoning code and our development standards, height setbacks, things of that sort. The staff will also do what is required under state law, which is to review the environmental impacts under CEQA. All that will then occur. And then if necessary, and which I understand it probably will be, the project will be presented to the Planning Commission. And at that time, staff will prepare a report. That report will be made available to the public. There will be a public hearing involved and the public will be invited to provide input and, and participate in that process. My understanding is that there will likely be elements that will require City Council approval. And so that project will then be brought to the City Council for approval. So I just want to make that clear tonight of, tonight we're just approving or looking at the broad bird's eye view of what can be placed on-site. After that, the developer will take it from there and will be acting as a regulatory agency thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Director Xander Molina, Planning and Development Services.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As indicated by City Attorney Guerra, this is a consideration by the City Council of three concept plans that are submitted by the buyer, Greens Group. The staff is being asked, excuse me, the City Council is being asked to consider and recommend approval or approve all three concepts. Prior to the staff's presentation, there is a video that we'd like to play. So this is, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This, this discussion that we're having tonight is consistent with our 2030 Vision Statement and also the priority list that the council approved for this fiscal year. A little bit more background, the City Council approved on August 13th a purchase and sale agreement with Greens Group. And pursuant to that, to that agreement, escrow did open on August 16th. So right now, the buyer is going through their due diligence period. And part of the purchase and sale agreement required the supplemental of the concept plan. In that purchase and sale agreement, there was section, there is Section 8.1 that requires the concept plan and also identifies that the seller is in favor of certain uses, such as the office, hotel, sit-down restaurants, retail uses, the multifamily uses. The agreement also indicated that the seller did not want pawn shops, laundromats, service stations, gas stations, and convenience stores. And so those were the parameters by which the agreement was approved. The properties are, are just west of the canal. This is Brickdale Assisted Care Facility. McDonald's is here on the west. And so it's these three parcels that are the subject of discussion and escrow at this particular time. The three concept plans are proposed and the, as indicated by the city attorney, the council's only considering the uses. And what this does is, once the council or the seller indicates the uses that are acceptable to seller, then that, and by proposing, the staff proposing all three different concepts, that gives the buyer the, the flexibility to be able to move forward with any of those concepts and expedite the process. The next step again is to go through the entitlement process through the city Planning Department. And it'll go through public hearings to the Planning Commission. So the agreement required a site plan to show the arrangement of the structures and to show the improvements that would be constructed, to show the parcelization. We anticipate that the site will be re-subdivided. The buyer is also aware that with the development of the site, intersection improvements will be, need to be done on canal. And so in doing that, this property here, this corner, is owned by Brookdale. We refer to it as Brookdale Property. And when this intersection's improved, there will need to be some right-of-way acquired and widening done to accommodate through access. The city, city manager has spoken with, with Brookdale Property owners and they are aware of this request and they are open to the process of allowing the improvements and then also possibly acquiring in the future the property. So Concept One, which was in the staff report, this provides the schematic and it shows the office, hotel, multifamily, residential, multifamilies here on the south side adjacent to Brookdale and the residential properties. This shows the incorporation of the Brookdale Property, which although it's not acquired, it's provided and it shows a complete street escape and also how it's integrated. It's proposed or shown here as a possible park or open plaza. And these, these uses are consistent with the purchase and sale agreement. But because this Brookdale Property is not owned by the buyer, it's not controlled by the buyer, the second concept plan is the concept that excludes this park area. And this is the same type of uses, the same layout. Brookdale Property should be acquired. It can be easily integrated, integrated to, to be consistent with Concept Plan One or integrated in some other fashion. Concept Plan Three, this is, this is where it's a little bit different. Concept Three is being proposed by the buyer because there is a demand for a convenience store and fueling station. And so the buyer has provided this concept that shows those uses. And again, it's proposed because there's an interest. There's, by allowing this type of use, there's a, there's an end user that would move forward with this and this would kickstart the project and see it to completion. This, this proposal still has the office, the hotel, and the multifamily on the south side. It has one drive-through, a sit-down restaurant. And then again, in this corner here, this northeast corner, it shows the convenience store and fueling stations. There's just two, two things to keep in mind with this proposal, this proposed concept. One is that the purchase and sale agreement did indicate that the city did not favor these type of uses. The purchase and sale agreement wasn't so clear, or I should say, wasn't so specific to say that the uses were prohibited. And so it does allow the seller to consider it. It's just not the seller's first choice of uses. The other thing too, is that in the future, should Brookdale Property become acquired by the buyer, it's, it's, we would want to see how this property would integrate with the, with the, with the rest of the center. When you have, excuse me, when you have these restaurant uses that lend itself to this open area that can then be utilized by the users of these restaurants. With the convenience store, buyer would need to show us how that would integrate because it just seems to be a little bit different as far as the integration of the, integration of the uses. But we would, we would want to see that. So those are the concept plans now. There was the video that was shown earlier, but these are just a few pictures that are photographs we wanted to show the council and the audience. These are actually renderings of the entire site. And then this is the retail component, hotel, the residential, and the office. And so staff is recommending that the City Council approve all three concepts and allow the buyer to move forward with the concept that works best to get the project going and see it forward towards completion. And also, the council also, the seller has the option to provide some other direction if it sees, it seems that that would be appropriate. And then finally, if the City Council or the seller does recommend or does approve all three concepts, then we would direct the city manager to issue a written approval to Greens, which then gives them the green light to, to move forward. And with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
How is it that the items that are shown in Concept Plan Three, how do they expedite or kickstart the project? And is there anything else that could expedite or kickstart? Why or why not? Thank you.
So Councilmember Allen, I think that, that question's best answered by the, the Greens Group because they've been in, you know, they have that background information and can better demonstrate that or explain that. But I'll be happy to, to respond to any of the questions you may have.
That's the only one I have right now. And if you don't want to answer it, that's fine. I can take it later. You don't, you don't.
What it.
It's okay.
High level, what it is, is that there's, there's a, there's an interest for that type of use.
Okay.
And if that interest moves forward, then there's a financial component that helps construct the project and do all the infrastructure improvements. And I think the city manager, Mr. Duffy, wanted to, to also add to that.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. And the applicant, the Greens Group, can actually answer this question. But often in development projects, what, what the developer will have to do is they will, they will shop the project. And then based upon interest for the project, they can then monetize that interest. And so because they've already received significant interest in a certain type of category, they're looking at this and they're saying, okay, so, so we can spend our appropriate time marketing the project. Or we, if we have someone already to give us the financing to be able to push the project forward, it just cuts down time. And that's, that's what she's saying is that the, the interest is there based upon the market. And this is all about the market and being able to monetize your contracts to, to do your complete building. But Greens Group, Adam Correll and Angelo, and Angel Orozco are here from the Greens Group. And more than welcome to add anything if you want to, sir.
Honorable Mayor, City Council staff, thank you for having us today. So the whole concept here is we're working on a project over at Van Bier and the 215 Freeway right now. And it's a very similar mixed-use development. And what we found is, when you have a large project, a lot of people always sit there and say, especially when you're taking it to the market with brokers, what happens is, somebody will ask the question, well, who's coming? Who's coming? Who's coming? And we had a hard time. We bought that property out in 2014. And lo and behold, we got lucky and In-N-Out came. So once In-N-Out came, we secured Starbucks. We were able to secure Jersey Mike's. We got another fuel station out there, 76 Circle K, and Hampton Inn. So, but, but it took that initial user to take that, that first step. Right now, we actually have a user that's interested in that first step. And that's actually the fuel station. So that's what it allows, is it's like who's coming and you can sit there and say somebody. And the fuel station actually does drive traffic that will also help a coffee shop or some type of other user to come in online. So that, that's why we're actually asking council and staff to consider this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah. I just have one more is, so how, how much do you believe it would expedite? What's the quantitative value of that, of that, is it six months, a year, six weeks?
It, it's all market-driven and honestly, it's, it's really hard to say. It just really depends on what the brokers can, can secure. The other thing I'd like to point out too is, is with that type of density, one other thing we've learned in our, in our mixed-use development projects, it's exactly like what the city attorney just stated a little while ago. It's also better, I think, to analyze a project with that type of density. So because it's always better to have density and not need it than need it and not have it. So we would like to actually analyze it to the maximum extent practical on the site.
It was, it was interesting that I noted that the project you're doing, you mentioned on Van Bier in 215, that the, the entity that kickstarted that project was a restaurant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. That's a, yeah, okay.
Totally understandable, sir. In this case, we actually have a user actively interested in pursuing the site. So that's. So, that, that's the one thing, if you don't have a user, then somebody comes in and says, "Well, who, who else do you have?" And it's like one of those things that can actually become harder to market in the future. So, that's why we'd like the city council and staff to, um, consider this, this option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, sir? Before you sit down. And are you Mr. Orozco?
I'm sorry?
You're, you're-
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Adam Correll, I apologize.
Adam Correll.
I'm the VP of Development at Greens.
Mr. Correll.
Thank you.
I, I don't know if you can answer at this time, or if it's even appropriate to ask, but what, what's the potential val- value of this project once it's built out?
It really depends on the, on the actual mix of uses at the end of, of the game. Uh, it depends on who we secure for the office tenants. It's, it's actually, we're, we're pursuing it as creative office or even medical office. Um, it, there's a lot of variables in that, but I couldn't tell you like what the actual, uh, at this stage of the game, what the actual value of the project would be at the end.
Okay, so you're not, and you're not comfortable with the ballpark then either?
Oh, I, I, I don't, I'm not a number, I'm not the numbers guy on that side. If I'm in here, he'd probably be able to divulge that information, but-
That's okay, I appreciate that. All right, any other questions of staff or, um, Mr. Correll? All right, thank you so much, I appreciate that. All right, well, open public comment at this time?
We have no public comment, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Oh, I, I do apologize, I, I, I'm so sorry, we have one email that we did receive.
I believe you have one coming toward you here too.
We received an email from Ms. Stromwell, who opposes the project, and she would prefer something smaller, but she does not like any of the concepts as presented.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kenneth, Kenneth Sykes.
Yes. Excuse me, um, just a few comments. What does Grand Terrace need with four gas stations? The convenience store that's proposed, is this convenience store going to drive the convenience store out of business that's been a long-term resident of Grand Terrace? How many times has the Holiday Inn Express around the corner been filled to capacity that we would need a hotel here? Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate you speaking. Do we have another request to speak on this item?
No, Madam-
Please turn that in. Thank you. Ms. Linda Bartman?
Yeah, um, just want, in all this planning, to take into consideration the commu-, the, the housing tract right behind, which is where I live, Reed Avenue, Scott, um, we're right behind the, um, senior complex, and right across the street from us, they built the Hidden Gate. Now, you're going to take away what little view we have left of anything right there, building, we're one house away from that field you're going to build in. And we've been there 33 years, and we've seen a lot of changes, and you took away our view of the mountain, now you're going to take away our view of anything. We're going to have, what, a three-story apartment complex right at the end of our street? I don't think any of you on that board or on that council would want that right outside your house. And I think you really ought to take that into consideration. Everybody in that little street we live on, it's about a three-block area, have been there long-term. I'm surprised more of them are not here, but, um, you know, consider everything, consider the people that have been there long-term. Benning, Grand Terrace, when it was still a little pokey-nothing town, and that's why we moved here, and please, don't block what little view we have left. Don't put an apartment complex right at the end of our street. Just, you know, think about the little people.
Thank you, Ms. Bartman, I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your comments. And I see another request to speak for?
Hi, guys, I'm back. Um, I want to thank you for your support and your service. Um, I want to thank the mayor for supporting our neighborhood. I saw you out there walking the project with your husband, and, um, considering our concerns, I'm sure you all remember a lot of the concerns that we had while Stater Brothers was proposing their project, and who was the other guy, Johnson or somebody? Um, our neighborhood has suffered some problems with, um, kids hanging out, drugs, uh, whatever's going on back there, littering over there by the wall. And, as you know, our neighborhood is very close to that wall. One of the things we fought for was to have a setback so that we wouldn't have to be so close to the project. One of the good things that happened was there was a driveway put between the, um, the Stater Brothers and our neighborhood. However, the project that, that's being proposed is like five stories high and right to, back to our, our neighborhood. One of the rights that we have is quiet enjoyment. I fought for that when the Stater, uh, Stater Brothers project was going in, and exactly what happened? We have deliveries at 5:30 in the morning, 4:30 in the morning, they wake me up. Um, it's consistent, the mayor's helped me out with that, I've had some, some delay and, and, um, but it, it happens again and again. Um, overbuilding that site is not conducive to our little neighborhood. What we really talked about, uh, what was it, 20 years ago, was, um, a river walk setting, something, um, something we as a neighborhood could enjoy, and I'm not going to enjoy people in a hotel looking down into my backyard. I'm not going to enjoy, I don't know what kind of multifamily, uh, I guess it could be anything, it could be retirement, it could be Section Five, it could be apartments. And all of that makes a huge difference. I'm not against developing, I'm not, I never have been, um, but I would like you to be responsible and take care of us, um, and also take care of your promise to our neighborhood before the project was supposed to have a development of, of shrubbery and greenery on our side, and that's all gone to the wayside. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bidney, I appreciate you being here tonight. One more. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jay Bartman, I live at 12220 Reed Avenue, and, uh, been there 30, 33 years, and we have some concerns. We, uh, when the Hidden Gate facility was put in across the street from us, we were told, "Oh yeah, there's going to be a wall so you can't see into their, into their homes, they can't see into yours." Um, well, those, those, uh, lots were raised up so high, there's a wall there, but the wall doesn't keep us from looking into their house, or they're, them looking into ours. We had concerns about the, uh, the traffic lighting, you know, when they come down their street, they're going to shine their lights into our house. Uh, we were told they'd put a, a solid barrier, they did not, they put the solid barrier on the DeBerry side. So, now we, we have their lights coming into our house. When the Stater Brothers facility was put in, we had concerns, we came here, we had concerns about the lighting, lighting up the area at night. Um, it's, it's pretty bright in our backyards. The, uh, this new facility is only going to add to that. Uh, no matter how it's addressed, you're going to add people with lights, it's going to be bright. Another concern is, we don't want Reed Avenue going through, we don't want the traffic, we don't want foot traffic. Uh, if, if there's even a walk-through gate, we will be inundated with shopping carts. We don't want that. Um, I, I am sorry to report that we have had trouble on our street with vandalism. My, our mailbox has been destroyed three times in this year. I reported it once to the police. Um, my neighbor, same story, and on down the street. You can, you can talk to the other residents, and they've had the same problems. Um, I used to be on the skater side. Not anymore. They throw trash in our house, you know, in the front yard, in the street. I, I, I hope that you address these issues that we have, and we really don't want to see five-story buildings, four-story buildings, three-story buildings. You know, we, we, we really, we just don't want to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartman, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Hi, good evening. Um, I live at 12209 Pascal, which is on the corner of Pascal and Lape, right behind the Stater Brothers as well. The area on Reed has been a problem. We have people parking back there, loot acts, drugs, we have a hard time policing that, and we have a hard time getting the police out there. So, this is one thing that I think should be taken into consideration as well. With another multifamily housing project that's going to be able to climb over the wall as people are doing now, I think this is going to increase. So, I hope that you guys take into serious consideration, uh, the police force that we have in this city, and plan to make moves to give us a little more protection in that area. I, I just don't want to see it get any worse. I've only lived here five years, but I'm the one that's moving people off of Lape, and I'm probably getting a reputation for that already, but, um, we, we just don't need any more problems in that area. So, please take all that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Holt, I appreciate you being here tonight. All right, with that, I will close public comment. Okay, how many more do we have? You have one in your hand. All right.
Hi, my name is Tara Sessenya, I live at 22540 Brentwood Street, uh, in Grand Terrace. I'm also a planning commissioner, so for full disclosure, um, I understand everybody's complaints and issues, but I also understand that-
Madam Mayor, may we take a two-minute break?
Sure, we're in recess for 10 minutes. All right.
Um, I'm sorry-
We will reconvene our regular meeting, and Tara Sessenya?
And I've been informed that my position as the planning commissioner omits my being able to make a private citizen comment, so I'm going to re, retract my paper. Thank you.
Because this will come before you later on?
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight. All right-
Madam Mayor, if I may, just to clarify-
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Um, so, what I, I just advise is that she's welcome to speak as a member of the public, but if she does, potentially, that may, uh, affect her ability to participate in the decision when it does go before the planning commission. So, it's her decision, but I just wanted to make her aware of that issue.
I appreciate the decision that you made.
And, and just to be clear for the record, that, that applies whether she's in support of the project, against the project, whatever her thoughts are, just want to make that clear.
Okay, I know I rushed you in writing your name. Angela Wagner, thank you.
I thought about that as I wrote it down, I went, "Nobody's going to be able to read this." Um, we live at 22322 Van Buren Street, we lived, lived here 18 years, and, um, I'm excited for, we need tax revenue, I do understand that. I don't think we need four gas stations and a convenient, we have a convenience store, we're not even four square miles. I mean, I know that there's the new subdivision that's over in High Grove, they probably could use it, but, I mean, it's not really necessary. But, my husband and I would love to have a restaurant where we can go and sit and have a drink and food at the same time, we don't have that. We have one sit-down restaurant, so I'm excited about that. Uh, so, I like the first two, if you guys could possibly not do the gas station and the convenience store, that would be, that's all I wanted to put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner, I appreciate you being here tonight. Okay, is that the last one?
As far as I'm aware.
All right, I'm going to close, close public comment and bring it back to council for their comments and consideration of a motion.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I, I have some comments that I have liked to make about this project. Um, I like the concept plans, um, the three of them that were presented, um, I like this whole idea of this development, this mixed-use development. Um, if I, if I had my preference though, I like, I like the Concept Plan One with the outdoor area, that little, you know, sliver of land that's right by the entrance I think that's Concept Plan Number One. Are there any-
Councilmember Allen, I think the Concept Number Two is similar to that, but it is taking into consideration that they may not have control of that piece of land there.
Yeah, that's correct, I, I am, I'm aware of that, and I, that's why I prefer Number One, and I'll tell you, the, the thing I envisioned with that piece of land right there, and the reason I like it so much is, um, I really enjoy going over to Redlands to that, I think it's called Mountain Plaza, near the Harkins Theater, and they have that outdoor area where the families can come together, and there's several restaurants, and they even have live performances on weekends, live bands come there. And I envision that sort of a venue, that sort of an idea, I mean, we have a specific plan, and in this plan, we said we want more pedestrian-friendly Barton Road, and I strongly believe that Concept Plan Number One will help bring that vision to reality. And, um, you know, whenever our city was, uh, founded in 1978, folks, when they selected a name, they didn't say, "Well, let's just call it Average Terrace." And nobody said, "Hey, um," nobody stood up and said, "Hey, let's just call this everyday ordinary, just like all the other terraces, terrace." You know, that's not us. You know, we, our, our founding residents, those who started this, this beautiful city, they had a vision, and our city staff has worked hard towards that vision and elected leaders, and, um, they, they had, uh, they knew that they had something extraordinary up here on this hill, on this terrace, and that's why they named it Grand Terrace. And, so, I'd like to challenge us to be bold in this development. I don't want to just see canal crossing, I'd like to see grand canal crossing. Right? All right. So, let's get busy and get to work.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Allen. Further comments? Councilmember Hussey?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who came out here and spoke. You know, we all care about our community, we all moved here for a reason, because it has that Mayberry Town feel. And, um, talking about mailboxes, crime, you know, it affects my street, and I live off the beaten path, but my street's used as a thorough-through, and a lot of other council members, so we live here, we understand, you know? I end up building mailboxes for all my neighbors, because they're getting vandalized, and, you know, car windows smashed, so we are not immune from the crime, crime's going to continue to happen. So we are not immune from the crime. Crime's gonna continue to happen. We had the sheriffs, and they're doing the best of their ability. You know, I like to have a sheriff at each block, but we can't. And then we hear about developments. Since I've been on the council, one of the things I always heard from business owners is, "This place isn't user-friendly, this city for business." "We can't get any development going here, we can't do this, we can't do that." I believe Irene Heard at Lowe's was approved that one time, and then it got, you know, turned away from the city. So there's been a lot of what is, what's coming in. I don't even tell my wife what's coming in, because, until we do the ribbon-cutting ceremony, because people I've seen since I've been on the council back out all the time. And, um, but, you know, we think about the residents and what they need, and we're concerned about them. But then again, I gotta think about the residents, what they need and concern about them. And that's one of the things, being on the council, you don't realize the cost of everything. Our biggest cost is to have our law enforcement to maintain the, the safety of our city. And one of the things that we look at is development. The city manager, he's been given marching orders to find his development so we can maintain the city cost and maintain the, the Mayberry atmosphere. And unfortunately, growth does happen, and sometimes, you know, it happens in our backyard and doesn't, you know, we might not like it. And, you know, the city council, we try to work things around it. I think it's a nice development. Do we need four gas stations? I don't know. I know one gas station I try to get in, it's like impossible sometimes to get in there. But we do need a development, and it's been a dirt lot for a long time. And what's coming, our city has grown. We're getting a lot of, um, a lot of traffic from High Grove. They all shop here. We do have one sit-down restaurant that does serve alcohol, so, just to put that in perspective. But I'm just saying, you know, we have to think about the concepts. I liked all the concepts, like Mr. Allen. I do prefer concept one with the plaza. And it's nice, because I've been to that area, and you can see, you know, it's a nice family get-together. And that's what the city is about, is family and getting together and maintaining our little areas so we can shop and be, uh, you know, so we don't have to go outside other communities and shop. We have heard about people that wanted to stay in hotels and stay in Grand Terrace, because they feel safe. The students that go to Loma Linda, their families that want to stay in Grand Terrace. We had things in our high school where they had the robotics competition, and nobody had places to stay. The multiple-family residential, you know, in the states, um, has cities, and they want to develop multiple-family residential area, because we all know the property's expensive here. So we have to look at their needs, too, the young families starting out. So, you know, approve all three concepts, but I really like concept one, but I'll leave that up to developers, so, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, you have comments?
Thank you. I have a, uh, I'm requesting a clarification from staff. That, I guess, the exit or whatever it is, near the multifamily residential unit, is that not a, a, a fire exit only? Says it's a slight, best I can tell, with our little deal here, it says it's sliding. That doesn't tell me anything.
Mayor Protem Wilson, are you, on the slide here, referring down in this area?
Yeah, well, to the left of it. Right there.
This, this may be, um, is that a fire exit? Yes, it's a fire exit.
That's what I thought. So it's only set up for emergency fire regress. It's not set up for, you know, regular, everyday traffic, correct? Okay. So just so the neighborhood knows that. All right, so the intention is not to, you know, you get a freebie in between the multifamily residential and your houses. That is just an emergency.
Mayor Protem, I think Director Molina has more to say on that.
Just, just for clarity, um, Mayor Protem, so this, and, and yes, we're not talking about site development, but because the question was asked, this residential multifamily, the, the residents of this have access through the center and through this back end, but this commercial traffic has no access to the residential.
There you go.
And I think that's, that's where, where you were going with that.
That's where I was going. Thank you.
Okay, the further discussion of all of this will be at the planning commission if we decide to move forward with this. And so I hear questions from the audience, but we've, we've gone past the public comment period, and we're really just looking at the concepts and what we like here tonight. So Mayor Protem, did you have more questions about the comment, or more comments about the concepts? Which ones that you like in particular or do not like?
No, it's just an issue that had been raised by one of the, one of the neighbors, and I just thought it'd be interest, interesting to understand what the intent, the concept was.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Adam Correll, you had a comment that you wanted to make?
We at Greens, we pride ourselves on finding the win-win for, not just between the city and for the developer, but also with the members of the community. I am happy to meet with anybody after this, this hearing and just talk about the projects, talk about their concerns, and try to figure out how we can live harmoniously. We were very conscientious about putting a residential development, adjacent to the residential development, to create that buffer between the retail pieces and what, what the members of the community would be predominantly concerned about. Because I believe that RFP originally had it to where that was going to be a commercial use, but we were actually the ones saying, "That doesn't make sense because of the community." So that was one of the things that I wanted to kind of point out to everybody, that we are trying our best to try to accommodate the community as well as the city needs, along with having a successful development. And I also got an answer for you. The development would be about fifty million.
Thank you.
Net asset. And the one other thing I'd like to add is, is, is we still would like to move forward with option three, only because, like I said, it's like, I want to, we want to analyze that density and everything else, so if we could also still consider that, I greatly appreciate it, because like I said, we are trying to create that buffer. And, you know, I think that everybody likes to have choice, as far as like what they, where they want to fill up. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. Further discussion? From the council? Councilmember Allen?
Well, I don't, I don't think that the, um, the question, for me, is not about whether or not Grand Terrace can support another gas station. I just would like to, if we do, I would rather see it in a different location. Closer down to, you know, somewhere between Michigan and the freeway, and, or on the other side, you know. And not in that particular development. So I believe that over time, as, in, in the future, the traffic's gonna be there that can support, you know, another fueling station. But I prefer in this development what I see in concept plan number one.
Okay, so you're saying you would like to only, only consider concept one?
No, I'm not saying that I would only consider concept plan number one.
Okay.
But I'm saying that I strongly prefer concept plan number one.
All right.
It's my, my preference. I just see, I, I know we're trying to create a, an area that's pedestrian-friendly, walkable, enjoyable in the evenings, and I just think that that plan can help us achieve that vision.
I think all of the concepts have been well thought out, at least for a concept. And I do like that, that our proposers have really taken to heart what we said in wanting to create a buffer between the residential and the commercial. I do like concept plan one the best. I understand, concept plan two is very similar, but you don't have control of the Brookdale property, although if concept plan one and two were, were considered, I would hope that there would still be the, the idea that when there's an opportunity to purchase and control that land, that, that might be developed. But I think that that would add to the charm of the center. Having said that, concept three, I understand that it's not as desirable as the others. But if you have that use and you're able to market it better, that does make it something for the, for the actual ability to create the whole center. And it does, it, it does make it important to be able to, to market it that way. So I mean, I could see, I could see agreeing to all three and saying, you know, you're gonna go through a lot to get to the, through the planning commission, you're gonna go through a lot when you, when you speak to the residents and get their considerations. And I imagine that there's probably gonna be some change by the time you get this finished. So I could support moving forward with all three concepts.
Uh, Mayor?
Councilmember Allen.
I would like to know if there's any, if anybody could say with any sort of authority, how, if concept plan number three were approved, or were the one that was made, went through with, how, what effect does this, um, this business, this, this convenience store, gas station, have on those other businesses who are looking to occupy those pads? Is whoever's first, does that influence whoever comes afterwards? Is my que, you know what I'm saying?
That's an interesting crack. Mr. Duffy, can you comment on that?
Because I'd like to have some high, high-quality grand businesses in this, in this development, you know. Some really, you know, good stuff.
Yes, and if I understand the question, I, you're looking for, um, I mean, there are no guarantees in terms of, in terms of the development. But what I can tell you, based on my experience and based on my conversations with, with the Greens group, the strategy in which they're using is to have that first user and then, and bring in. After going, after going to several conventions, shopping center conventions, it's, it's always important to have, you know, that, that, that one carrot for the other developers. And it's, it's, you know, when we were at the conference the other day, and we saw that happening tonight, is, once you get the one person to step out there, and it's, it's the one business to say, "This center is a good center." And if it's a national brand, then you have them follow. If you ever go to, uh, if you ever go to a, a shopping center, if you go to a, a Walmart, when I was doing development in other cities, I would, I mean, people didn't like Walmarts, but I said, "You have to look beyond that." When you go to Walmart, there's always feeder stores around, around them. So if you go to, right, right now, what I, what I see when I go to Corona, I see a State of Brothers, an Auto Zone, I see a Miguel's, and then I see what, what I'm hoping, I just, I just referenced what, what's happening here. Then I see Chipotle and Carl's Jr.'s and other places around those centers. And so what you, what you have here is that once you get a national brand, and whoever that national brand is, they've got a model that's, that says, "These customers congregate in this particular area." And so depending on who the national brand is, you're going to, you're going to have that, that synergy developed there.
Yeah, but what kind of business would, I mean, does the first business in influence the rest of the businesses that come in? I mean, you understand what I'm saying? I mean, does-
Well, I, I think it really, it's about, there, there are no guarantees, but it's really about relationships, and it's about the business model. I can tell you, based on the tax revenue, every business type and what the value's going to be. That same model is run by the Greens group. They have a relationship with, he just, he just told you that his first, his first deal in Riverside was In-N-Out Burger. And so part of this whole process, for me, was, this project, I was marketing this project three years ago, going from shop to shop to shop to shop to shop. And then I got smart and said, "Wait a minute, the real, get a developer to do it, because they've got the relationships." And so what you'll, what you'll see happen is that once you get the national chain in, then you'll get, you'll get the others to follow.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking about the newest developments around us. I'm gonna think about the ones in Redlands, you know, like over there where the Sprouts is. There's not a gas station there. And I'm gonna think about, there's a, um, let's see, no, and there's not a gas station at that one. I don't, you know.
Well, and so-
They have national brands.
Well, and, and that's because, you know, in Redlands, they, they do have that density. And one of the things that people need to understand about Grand Terrace in terms of the development, people see Grand Terrace as twelve thousand, uh, twelve thousand population, through three square miles. And, and so we have a retail capacity of about sixty-five million dollars in a one-mile radius. But that number jumps to two-hundred-and-fifty million when you go to a three-mile radius. That number jumps to, at a five-mile radius, that number jumps to one-point-six billion dollars. And if you, if you look at around us, how many shoppers that we have right now in this general area that shop in, the nearest, biggest section of, of shopping centers is San Bernardino. And, and most of the residents in Grand Terrace, High Grove, Loma Linda, will not cross the 210 freeway to go over there. So they're going much further away. And so we have a retail sales leakage that shows that we have this five-mile capa, five-mile capacity where Barton Road could be the center of commerce for the area. And so by, by, this center should be a cav, should be the catalyst to, to doing just that. So the first one in is going, is gonna make, is gonna make a really big, a real big impact.
I think what Councilmember Allen is saying is if the first one in is a gas station, does that mean that the rest that follow aren't as big a name as they might be if you started with something other than a gas station?
Well, I, I think what you, what you really have, it's, it's a very good question, but the Greens group and any developer that is gonna look at Grand Terrace, they're, they're looking at, the first thing is, they're looking at the median household income. So people want to go Trader Joe's. Trader Joe's will not come to Grand Terrace, because Trader Joe's needs a hundred-and-five, a hundred-thousand-dollar median income. Although ours is good, at sixty-nine thousand, they, they will not come in, into, into the area unless you have a really dense population. And so the first, you know, I've talked to multiple developers. If the first one's fuel, what you're gonna have there is this. Fuel isn't the caveat, but the driving factors of, of, of cars coming in is gonna, is gonna increase. So fuel becomes the destination point, but then you have all these other amenities, and you, and that's what, and that's what happens. So, you know, if you had a Trader Joe's come in, that would be great. Then you would get lots of other activity around it. You have a fuel station come in, and it's not because of the fuel, it's because of the traffic that's driving into the fuel station, and that's gonna generate the, the other restaurants and the, and the fast food places and so on and so on. And so the developers can tell, tell you more about this, but my, my experience has been is that they've got a model that they've built in. And it's so very important to have a, a successful developer who has a list of clients that they've worked for, that, that they're gonna be able to build a good development, have a reputation, and they're gonna be able to offer a quality product. And that's really what, what this is about. And what they're saying is that based upon fuel, they can take a contract from, from fuel and be able to jump-start the project. That's, that's their, that's their overall goal. But I, I do want to say this to the council. I think the council's made it known, the comments, what their preferences are. And so while the Greens group would have the flexibility to look at fuel, I think that the Greens group is wise enough to understand what the council has said here today.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Hussey.
Yes, one more quick comment for the residents. Like the mayor said, this is a concept, this is the beginning of the plans. And get involved. Get involved with the planning commission meetings, get involved, your voice. You know, as part of the, the residents that helped with the high school and stuff, build that. So your voice matters. The, the Greens group, they said they'll work with the residents, so, you know, get involved. Tell about your concerns with the Reed Street, you know, ask if about the multifamilies, if they cannot put windows on one side. So that's up to you guys to get involved at the planning commission, so it gets back to us. But, you know, let your voice be heard on that. The mayor said that this is a concept, we're beginning stage of, uh, of the plan, so, that's just all I had to say, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, how would you like to move forward with this item, then?
Madam Mayor, I could make a recommendation to approve the concept plans proposed by the Greens group for development of 22317, 22293, and 22273 Barton Road. the Greens Group for development of 22317, 22293, and 22273 Barton Road, subject to, in accordance with the executed agreement for the purchase and sale of real property and joint escrow instructions between the City of Grand Terrace and the Greens Group, or provide other directions regarding the proposed concept plans, and direct city manager to issue written approval notice of the selected concept plans to the Greens Group.
Second.
All right, so you're motioning for any of the three concepts?
All three.
Okay. And, okay, so motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Mcnevo voting yes.
All right. Thank you all for your discussion. Thank you to all of you who came out tonight. You know who the developers are, they promised to work with the, the neighbors, and I, I will take them at their word that they will do that. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item nine, which is award of contract for signal modification project at Preston Street and Barton Road in an amount not to exceed $82,000. Mr. City Attorney, I believe we looked at this particular project once before, and I am beyond 500 feet. Shall I stay or shall I go?
I, I, I think we, we determined you could stay.
All right.
If I recall.
Okay.
Yep.
For the record, I live on Preston Street, just beyond 500 feet from this particular project.
Yes.
All right. So we have before us Public Works Director Alan French.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Here to present this item of the contract for the signal modification for Preston and Barton Road. This item supports staff, I'm sorry, the staff item supports goal, 2030 goal number two, to maintain public safety by investing in critical improvements to the infrastructure, and it's on the department's priority project list. This project is to upgrade the traffic signal at Preston and Barton with a five-head left-turn signal indicator that will be added to increase the safety for the turning movements. In the slide, that's a replica of a five-head indicator. This will be installed at, on Barton Road section for the left turn onto Preston. The project also replaces the controller that was damaged earlier this year with, in an accident that happened at the intersection. Funding for the project will come from the Spring Mountain Ranch mitigation fund balance and also the reimbursement that we received from the accident to replace the controller cabinet on Preston. The traffic study for the Spring Mountain Ranch project determined that about 5% of traffic would be going through that intersection, so we would utilize up to approximately 5% of the fund balance from that mitigation to pay for the project, as well as the reimbursement that we received from the traffic accident. The project, and you can see there's a slide of the accident, and then in the lower right-hand corner is the existing signal at Preston, and you can see there is no left-turn indicators on the signal today. The project was reviewed and supported by two traffic consultants that reviewed the site, and both recommended to upgrade, this upgrade for the signal, that it would be the best solution at this time. As concluding, staff is recommending the council authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with TSR for $82,000 for the signal modification at Preston and Barton. Should the council have any questions at this time? I'm here to, and happy to answer any questions. And Gabriel Sepuritan from TSR is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, Director French. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Director French, for your report. Is that a dedicated light turn lane in both, on Barton, in both directions on Preston?
Yes, Councilman, it sure is a dedicated lane.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Mr. French, is this going to be the solution to the long-term difficulty that everybody's experienced with the timing on this lovely stop, too?
Councilman, there was a timing issue after the accident for a, a long period of time where it was on timed phase, phasing, where it only went a certain time and then it would change. That has since been changed to the indicator. So that, that should have corrected the issue.
Good.
And, and this wouldn't affect that.
Director French, there was a timing issue before the accident. I don't believe that anybody ever looked at that intersection. I believe that led to a lot of people running that intersection light, even if it was red, especially people coming from both sides of Preston, because they felt that they had a very long time to wait when there was no traffic coming on Barton Road. I'm also hoping there's an opportunity for you to, to make sure that this is looked at periodically for timing issues, and that if there is a left turn, that certain times of the day it doesn't engage so that people are able to make a left turn without having to have the arrow, or not have to wait for it when there isn't anybody that, that needs to turn.
Okay, I guess, Mayor.
Are you able to do that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, these, the five-point signal head.
Okay, so can you tell me about the cost of this, though? Why is it, why is it $82,000?
Okay, the signal modification for the left turn, in, in addition to the controller cabinet, all combined is the, is the cost of the $82,000. So there's two components to the project, and it, it involves, there's rewiring in the signal that's needed for the left turn, especially because it, it isn't there now. So that's a major part of the cost to get the, the wiring in, and the controller cabinet to be installed with the equipment inside the cabinet as well. It's not just the cabinet itself.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? All right. Are there requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Close public comment, bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we award a construction contract to TSR Construction Inspection for Traffic Signal Modification Project at Preston Street and Barton Road in an amount not to exceed $82,000, and appropriate funding for project from Spring Mountain Ranch Fund and Insurance Settlement is listed below, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract, subject to city attorney approval as to form. Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Mcnevo voting yes.
All right. Item 10 is a discussion and direction regarding regulation of 24-hour uses, operations of businesses in Grand Terrace. Director Sandra Molina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Signed by the mayor, this is a discussion item. This item is consistent with our 2030 vision statement. I'll go ahead and move forward with the rest of the presentation. So to give some background, city staff took a discussion to our city, excuse me, to our planning commission back on September 5th. And the reason why we, to discuss 24-hour operations and whether uses, particularly entertainment-type uses, restaurants, bars, and those type of uses, whether, if they're proposed to be 24 hours, whether they should be subject to administrative conditional use permit, excuse me, a conditional use permit, or some other permit, or not regulated at all with regard to their operating hours. This came about because staff does have a, has request for 24-hour uses. One is in a proposed new business, it's a cafe, tea house. The business owner that's proposing that is, is also the owner of Cos Ramen. Cos Ramen recently went to 24 hours, and so we found that our zoning code and specific plan, Barton Road specific plan, are silent on 24-hour uses. Now, the base use, the restaurant use, those are addressed and those are permissible, but operational aspects aren't really addressed. And the type of operational aspects that can sometimes come about on a 24-hour use might be noise, or litter, or lighting, or security needs. And so because of those aspects of the operation of 24-hour uses, we did take the discussion to planning commission. We asked the planning commission to look at or consider the three items up on the slide here. One is to, first, of course, to consider the, the item, but to either recommend that 24-hour uses, such as restaurants, bars, fast food, other entertainment uses, are subject to a conditional use permit, and then direct staff forward that recommendation to the city council. They could also find that, or recommend that 24-hour uses don't require a conditional use permit, and we would again direct that to the council. And then ultimately, the, the other option was for the planning commission to say, you know, this is a big, broad policy issue, direct to the council first. The, the planning commission, in having this discussion and taking public comment, so the slide's not working, they had residents express concern about 24-hour uses with regard to littering and possibly, you know, traffic, but also the business owner of Cos Ramen, Mr. Cormida, he also spoke about having 24-hour use, and, and the customer that he has, a lot of these customers come from maybe Loma Linda, the medical use, and so they're looking for a place to go during those non-traditional operating hours. And then also, a lot of his business, his patrons are construction folks that are working on our nearby freeways, and they're doing, you know, 24 hours or that graveyard shift, so to speak. And so they also are a big component of his business. And so the commission also considered that discussion. Ultimately, what the planning commission did was recommend that 24-hour uses should be subject to a conditional use permit. And I apologize, that's hard to read, but the commission was very cognizant of the cost of a standard conditional use permit, and they recommended an administrative one. And so today, we're, we're bringing to the council commission's recommendation, but the city council also, again, as part of this discussion, can, in their consideration, determine that the CUP is not appropriate for 24-hour uses, or they can agree with the planning commission and direct the staff to make the necessary changes. What's in the staff report for the city council was, subsequent to the planning commission's discussion, there was a, another option that was proposed, and that is a business permit requirement for 24-hour uses. And so that does not become a zoning application, but it's more use application. And our municipal code does have business permits for certain type of uses, such as for billiards, and that was an example that was put in the staff report. Later this evening, the council's going to consider a, a secondhand dealer permit, or junk, junk dealer permit. That's under Title V, that's a business permit as well. So that's also an option for the council to consider in lieu of a conditional use permit. And in this, I, this is in the staff report, but this is just a table, the, the biggest difference between the two is, again, one's, one's based on zoning, one isn't. The review authority for a CUP is the planning commission. For business permit, that comes to city council, it's not, not part of the commission's purview. And they're very similar in that, that those permits can be reviewed when it's determined that perhaps they're not operating in conformance with those permits, and they can both be subject, well, the CUP is subject to revocation if it gets to that point. Business permit can also be written that way, subject to revocation. And then after that, should the business continue to operate, then that would be a code case. And so although these are, these are very similar, one is a land use type of permit, and the other one is not. And so with that, we would ask that the city council discuss this item, whether 24-hour uses should be regulated, and consider these different alternatives or others, and direct us accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Other questions of staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Director Molina, could you describe for us how an administrative conditional use permit process would work?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. So the administrative conditional use permit is a provision in our zoning code that if a business is going to occupy a space that's 2,000 square feet or less, then it qualifies for administrative conditional use permit. If the business occupies a site that's greater than 2,000 square feet, or 2,000 and greater, then it's the standard conditional use permit. Most of the businesses that we see are occupying spaces less than 2,000 square feet. The, the other difference is that administrative, it's reviewed at staff level, and standard goes to planning commission, have noticed public hearing, and so the cost is different. Standard conditional use permit, subject to hearing, is a $2,400 application, whereas a administrative CUP is a $620 application.
Do you think it would be possible for us to, or would you recommend, in this instance, for a 24-hour use to be added to the 2,000-square-foot ceiling on the administrative CUP, and see that that would work in place of a full-on CUP?
I apologize, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, I didn't understand the first half of that question.
At this point, we explained that the ceiling on a, an administrative CUP is up to 2,000 square feet of livable or usable. Excuse me, because 24-hour use is a, is kind of a gray area, would it be possible for us to amend, or would it be desirable for us to amend our administrative CUP process to include 24-hour uses?
I see. Because this is not a zoning issue per se, but more of an operational issue than to amend our code to say, a 24-hour use is an administrative CUP, we, we could, if that's the desire of the council, amend our C, or, excuse me, our, our code. And I'll, I'll let the city attorney also chime in on that.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing to chime in at this point.
You did a good job, Director Molina.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Well, I was, as I was reading and studying about this, and then in my discussions, you know, and learning more about it, the, it seemed like since this is not a land use issue, which is what the CUP is for, perhaps the business permit might be the right way to go with it, or a more, either maybe less complicated, I don't know, if I can say less complicated, but it, I think it would provide the control that we're looking for.
I have a question before you answer that. Because you can, you can, you can answer that as part of this answer. When we have a gas station come into town, is there a different kind of requirement with their business permit than there is with other businesses that come in?
With regard to the 24-hour aspect, again, our, our codes don't address the operational aspect of a gas station or another use being 24 hours. Gas stations fall back under the base zoning.
Okay. But our gas stations are 24 hours?
We do, our, our gas stations here in town currently are 24 hours.
And so we, do we ask them when they come in, these gas stations? I know they've been there for a while. Do we ask if they're going to operate 24 hours? Because there are places where gas stations do not operate 24 hours.
You are correct, Mayor, that, that these stations do predate, but we don't, we wouldn't. We may ask, for instance, we've asked our fast food uses whether they operate 24 hours. For us, the, the, the difference between a, a gas station is typically they, because they're 24 hours, if they are, they're already addressing those security concerns. Because gas stations, you have a lot of drive-through traffic, so they're addressing the security concerns. They have lighting already in place, they're taking care of those type of issues where perhaps a, a restaurant or a bar or something like that, they may have security issues, but they may not be addressing them unless they're, as part of the CUP or business permit, asked to address them. So that, that would be one difference.
Well, that is, that is a specific concern, Mayor. What she was just mentioning is, because I know that down at Cos Ramen at the parking lot at night, it's, it's not lit, but he's open. And, and that has been mentioned to me personally about that. So lighting and security and that sort of thing with 24-hour businesses, when the business owner is not the property owner... owner is not the property owner, you know, and trying to, you know, make sure that, how is that going to be addressed? And I also would like to know how much a business permit costs as opposed to the, I know the admin CUP is $620, or $640, I think, no, $620. A business permit based on the, does it, does the cost vary on those?
So, let me answer that, Councilmember Allen, in response to your other question as well. So, from a staff perspective, to, from a, how we implement, the Council's desire, for instance, if the Council says it should be an administrative conditional use permit, then that's a very simple amendment to our code. If the Council directs staff to establish a business permit process, then that's a different change. We still, both times, we do amend our code, but we have to create the standards for the business permit for a 24-hour use. We don't have any right now. So we would, so the level of effort, the effort of work is a little bit more, but we're happy to do whatever the Council desires.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, and let me just follow up. And there's no fee established just yet for a business permit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Duffy, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor, just a point of clarification that I think the Council should probably, the City Attorney should probably weigh in here. As we talk about the 24-hour use, I think through my conversation with the City Attorney, he referenced that you would be establishing when businesses can open and operate within the city, open and close. Because if you say 24-hour regulations, if someone opens '23, '24, I mean, '22, that's not really the issue here. The issue is, and I think that, from my conversation with the City Attorney, is that how do you enforce a 24-hour operation? I think that should be a part of your discussion, to see how that plays out. What measures would the Council approves this, what measures would they put in place to regulate the 24-hour businesses? And that is, how do you stop them from operating 24 hours by establishing a time cutoff when businesses can operate in the city?
Councilmember Allen.
I just want to make sure I understand that. So rather than saying, than stipulating 24-hour business, we would have to stipulate a time that a business, like midnight, 2:00 a.m., is that what you're saying?
Oh, the City Attorney, wait.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To be clear, I think the first question is, do we want our businesses to operate 24 hours? That's a yes or no proposition. From there, staff and I will work on the language to address whatever the policy direction is. Like currently, does a gas station require a CUP?
I'm not sure about that. It might be triggered with a convenience store.
Okay. Let's assume hypothetically that we have a business that will require a CUP to operate. One of the conditions of approval in our code existing is limits on hours of operation or duration of approval. So we already have, and this goes back to your question, can we ask, and do we ask? And so I would suggest that if we do, if it is subject to a CUP already, we would ask that question. And if the Council's policy direction was to say we do not want 24 hours, or we want operations to cease at 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. in that period, that that would be incorporated into the code, so that's more clear.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Further questions? All right, we'll open it up to public comments. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to Council for deliberation and direction.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen.
You know, I don't want to, I'm pretty hesitant to try to restrict any business on their efforts to make money.
As am I.
You know, and for obvious re, but I also understand that the concerns that residents and surrounding area might have. I just...
I would like to find a way that we can mitigate our concerns of noise and litter and security in the least intrusive and least expensive way possible for our businesses.
Has this become an issue with our residents? Is this why it's on the agenda? Is this, is there been a, some concerns expressed?
Director Molina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've had a lot of, we've had recent uses that are proposing 24 hours, and it's just an area that's not really addressed in our zoning. For instance, there is an application for Taco Bell currently in, being processed. When they first came in, they wanted to be, not 24 hours, but operate till like 5:00 in the morning, which is not 24 hours. And I think this speaks to maybe the Attorney's comment. That's not 24 hours, but there's those impacts of noise and potentially litter and that land use interface. And so they've since then modified those hours, so they're not proposing to operate that late. But then we also have Cos Ramen, that's 24 hours, and a second business that will be proposing to be 24 hours in that same center. So we brought the question forward.
Thank you, Director Molina. City Manager would like to make a comment?
Yeah, and just to kind of dovetail on that, the reason why this became an issue is because during our normal development process, when a new business comes in, and during construction, they disclose all of those things. They ask for operating hours, we look at noise, we look at issues, we make sure the lighting's correct, and so on and so on. It is the case where you have an existing building, where you have someone going in like Cos Ramen, who can modify the hours without there being that regulation. And so that, so it's the Cos Ramen, it's a thought process of the new Cos Ramen 2, they're trying to open their little finger food coffee shop. And so that's where we don't have any regulation, whereas Taco Bell, McDonald's, Miguel's, all of those items, you know, noise, traffic, lighting, all of those items were addressed initially when those businesses started. So when you have someone going into, you know, into an existing building, that's where the gap is, that we don't have someone to say, hey, well, wait a minute, you just got to get a business license, and you determine your own hours. And so that's, there haven't been, I guess we should probably get Lieutenant Wolf to weigh in, I don't know of any issues associated with Cos Ramen having noise complaints. I know one of the things when they wanted to do their, when we were told they were doing their 2:00 a.m. in the morning operations, our initial concern was, hey, lighting, security. And so I think we addressed those issues when they came in for the original purpose, because they were doing, I guess, tenant improvements, and that's when we caught them in the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
I know we keep referencing Cos Ramen in this discussion, but we have other businesses we've talked about that are open 24 hours, and if we want to talk with, have, are there concerns, are those same concerns would, could be addressed by Lieutenant Wolf? I mean, do those businesses have those same concerns that we have with Cos Ramen? I mean, lighting and security, are there, they actually have, theirs under control?
Well, I think your current code tries to regulate that, because you have some requirements for billiard rooms and things of that particular nature, so you've got that in there. But this was, this is a unique area that we're approaching, and I think what staff is trying to do is to be proactive versus having to be reactive later on.
Mayor Pro Tem.
As far as I'm concerned, I would support an administrative conditional use permit process for 24-hour use.
Well, what...
Councilmember Allen.
Would the, would that provide the amount of control that you want to have over, or what kind of control do you want to have, and would that provide it?
I think it provides it, I just, the cost of it is what I'm concerned about. Mr. Duffy?
Well, I think we would need a little more clarity to make sure what we need to include as a part of that process. Because right now, you have gas stations, and you said they're operating 24 hours. So if we approve an administrative CUP, would we then be asking those gas stations to now try to get a CUP? Or are we limiting the focus of...
Mayor Pro Tem.
I think it'd only be fair to grandfather those uses in.
Madam Mayor, if I may...
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. That is certainly one option. Another option that I have implemented is to give existing operations a grace period of like two years, a year, whatever the Council directs, to come into compliance by obtaining the permit. So it's not immediate, but it does give them time to bring their operations to current code.
And so would we look back at the gas station use and see if they already have a CUP that addresses the issue, and then it wouldn't be required?
Possibly, yes. I leave that to the Director.
Madam Mayor, we could do that.
Just as long as we have some kind of paper coverage, I suppose, in relation to that use, those gas stations have been there for a long time. I just, I'm reluctant to impose additional requirements and processing on a business that's already here and thriving, when we're the ones that didn't have an ordinance that actually addressed the issue.
Mr. Duffy? Would you like to share your comments?
Well, yes, Mayor, I was just, I was asking the City Attorney, would it be acceptable if, as part of the Council's recommendation, that they would say that you would require an administrative CUP for any business that doesn't have an existing business license in the city?
That doesn't have an existing business license?
Right. So if a new business came in and wanted to operate 24 hours, they'd be subject to the administrative CUP.
Mr. City Attorney.
Same concept, I don't know if I tie it to the business license, I just say basically any business existing as of the date of the ordinance's effective date shall be grandfathered in, or however you want to say it, if that's the direction of the Council.
Any business that's currently operating 24 hours.
That's correct.
Okay. And how will you measure that? 24 hours?
We'll have to determine that, yes.
All right. All right, so do you have direction? Do you need to come back to us with this?
I would recommend a motion, so it's clear for the record as to what the direction is to the staff.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem.
See how we word this, word this. I'd like to make a motion that the City Attorney draft language to enable an administrative conditional use permit process with regard to the 24-hour uses and operations in Grand Terrace, and a caveat that addresses the issue of prior use, and what process might be pursued, not including a complete new process. Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, very well stated. Second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. Move to Item 11, which is an application of Safeway Recycling and Recovery, Inc., for City Council approval of a junk and secondhand dealer license for the property located at 21516 Main Street. Director of Planning and Development Services, Sandra Molina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So this proposal is for a junk and secondhand dealer license for Safeway Recycling. So at 21516 Main Street, there used to be a business there called American Metal Recycling, and in 2011, they received a conditional use permit to be able to collect recyclable materials, CRV, you know, cans and plastic bottles. They also took in metal products and some household items, such as bed frame, well, yeah, the metal bed frames, they would take in refrigerators. But our business permit requirements for any business that takes in scrap metals, because they also took in scrap metals, they require this business permit. And so American Metal Recycling recently vacated their premises, and Safeway Recycling and Recovery is proposing to occupy that space. And so part of that process, they're able to reoccupy that space, operating in the same manner as American Metal Recycling under that conditional use permit, but they are required to get their own business permit through the City Council. And Chapter 5.44 regulates this type of permit. This application was forwarded to our Building and Safety Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Planning Department reviewed it to get recommendations, and all three departments are recommending that the Council issue this business permit. In addition, this type of use is heavily regulated, our municipal code and our business, California Business and Professions Code highly regulates this type of business. And so the business takes in, somebody comes in to recycle metal, they have to have an ID, they have to get all their information, they have to put that in the records, they have to notate what the item was, and then you have to keep those records on-site, and they're subject to inspection with notice. And so with that, staff is recommending that the City Council issue the, or approve the business permit. But staff does have one proposed modification to the resolution, and on Stamp Page 397, down at Section 2 with the Council's findings, we would add at the end, so it would read, "The City Council hereby approves a junk and secondhand dealers license for Safeway Recycling and Recovery, Inc., subject to the requirements contained in Chapter 5.44, Junk and Secondhand Dealers of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and all other applicable laws, applicable laws, comma, and contingent upon issuance of a business license," so that they run together. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. Turn the call back over to the Mayor.
Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Director Molina. Page 391, in the last paragraph, about halfway down, or partway down, it says that, well, the whole paragraph, it says, "In approving the use, the Planning Commission imposed several conditions of approval." And it goes through some of those, and then one of those conditions is prohibiting onsite disassembly. Is that, that's disassembly of junk that's brought there. Is that correct?
Yes, when the Planning Commission was considering the CUP in 2011, they were concerned that people were going to drive in a vehicle or bring something in and dismantle exactly what you're saying, yes.
Okay. Because they do that there, I've used that place for many years to turn in my recycling, and people go there and they dismantle all kinds of things in that parking lot. And so I just, I think that, you know, we need to make sure that if we're...
Further questions? All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, closed public comment, bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion.
So we're, this is for a business license, right? Is that correct, Director Molina?
It's a business permit.
Business permit. Okay, Madam Mayor, then I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, approving a junk and secondhand dealers license for Safeway Recycling and Recovery.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes with the Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Item 12, which is professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Inner West Con...
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes with the Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magnobo voting yes.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item 12, which is professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Inner West Consulting Group to provide management services to planning and development services and Public Works Department in the amount not to exceed $147,000. Director Molina.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, members of the City Council. As indicated by the mayor, this is a proposal to enter into a contract, a new contract with Inner West Consulting Group for management services to planning and public works. So, in 2017, the, the City Council did approve an amendment to an existing contract with Inner West. So, the existing contract was for, or is for, public works inspection and construction management. And so, we took to the City Council, the City Council approved a modification to incorporate deputy building official and plans examiner functions. And the contract limited the services to 16 hours per week. The plan checking component of the service would be offset by developer deposits, and so there was an offset with regard to the hourly rate. So, we've, we've been operating under that contract since 2017. And I would add that the city had budgeted a deputy building, excuse me, a building official, but because we were having difficulty hiring a person that would work part-time, we ended up going to consulting services. But since then, we're finding that we have a greater need in planning and in public works for a, a consultant that would provide management-level services to the directors and also to our line, frontline staff. There's a bit of, there was a need for that middle, middle manager type of, of consulting services. And so, this new contract would expand the scope of services to provide that level of service, not only to, to planning and development services, but also to public works. And so, the expanded scope would include, again, management services support to those different departments and divisions. The person would also provide direct customer service at the counter in the field. And I would also, as indicated in the staff report, we've, under the auspices of the contract, we have brought in a consultant named Chaz Ferguson, whose resume is in the staff report, and he's been providing this 40-hour service, and he's been going out to the field, he's been helping people at the counter, he's been helping with code enforcement staff and animal control staff, and also with some public works issues that have come, have come up. And so, part of the work would be, again, the building official, the plans examiner, also some inspections that he's gone out and done. And then, there would be the hourly offset, again, by the developer deposits. So, staff would recommend that the City Council award the agreement to Inner West to provide the management services to planning, development services, and public works, not to exceed $147,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, subject to city attorney approval asked to form with regard to the contract.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Director Molina, on packet page 417, under additional services. There's a sentence partway down, says, "Any increase in compensation of up to 10% of the contract sum, or $25,000, whichever is less, or in the time to perform of up to 180 days, may be approved by the contract officer." $25,000, that's 20% of the contract, isn't it? About 20% of the, is that the correct amount? And, and the, and the contracting officer can approve that?
This, this particular section is written, so in addition to that contract amount not to exceed, but, was the city attorney going to comment on this particular section?
Mr. City Attorney.
Sure. What this section does is just provide some flexibility, if some special project comes up, that the contract officer can approve something. In this case, it's, it's up to 10% of the contract value, or $25,000, whichever is less. In this case, the contract value is $147,000. 10% of that is $14,700. So, that would be the contract officer's cap, should additional services be required.
Or, or $25,000, but that's irrelevant.
That's irrelevant because it's saying whichever is less.
And the contracting officer would be the city manager at this time?
I believe so, yes.
Further questions? All right. We'll open up public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend, I recommend award a professional service agreement to Inner West Consulting Group to provide management services to the Planning and Development Services and Public Works Department in an amount not to exceed $147,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, subject to city attorney approval asked to form.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magnobo voting yes.
All right, thank you. So, our request for future agenda items will be moved to another date. City Manager Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind the mayor and council and the community about the Truck or Treat event that's going to be occurring next Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. There'll be costume contests, and there'll be costume judging from ages 0 to 5, 6 to 10, 11 to 15, and 16-plus, as well as dog costume judging. And it's a lot of fun, we had a lot of fun last year, and it's a great way for the community to come out and, and have a good time for trick or treat, trunk or treat. All right. Also, we have the, the annual country fair coming up on November, Saturday, November the 2nd, so it's going to be a fun-filled weekend, starting on Thursday, and on Saturday, culminating with the, the country fair put on by the Historical Cultural Committee, is from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at City Hall. We look forward to seeing everybody there. Also, then, on November the 11th, we have our annual Veterans Day at Veterans Freedom Park event. On November the 11th, we, we encourage everyone to come out at, at the Veterans Freedom Park. And then, finally, Mayor, my final presentation is, you were going to help me out with, I'm not very happy about this, but I do wish Sandra Molina a really great, warm wishes and good luck in her, her new endeavor. She'll be leaving us, this is her last week of employment with us, and she'll be going to Cathedral City to do some of the great things she's done here. And so, we have a plaque, and we'd like the mayor, the council, to read the plaque, and then we're going to take a photo of the Grand Terrace family, so we can treasure that as we miss Sandra Molina.
This is presented to Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director, "For your sincere commitment and devotion, in grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and dedication, for your leadership and hard work, your attention to detail, and exemplary, exemplary work ethic has aided this city to a level that has prospered. For your unselfish commitment and tireless cooperation, City of Grand Terrace thanks you for all your contributions towards enhancing the quality of life of the residents of this community dated the 22nd of October, 2019." And I echo the city manager when I say, "I'm not happy about this," but I do wish you the best, and I know that, that the city of, that you will be working in is very lucky to have you. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. All right. We, we do have a closed session tonight, so we will be recessing to closed session. And for those of you that are watching, we'll let you know that our next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you to everybody who came out and spoke tonight and shared their opinions and concerns with us. And at this time, we will recess to closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B, one potential case. At this time, we are in recess. All right, we'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9B, one potential case. No reportable actions at this time. Direction was given to staff. So, with that, we will adjourn to our next regular City Council meeting to be held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.